Please silence it. Like I said. All right. The City of Glendale Economic Council is now in session. Would everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge of Allegiance will be done by Alderman Schmelzling.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Eric Kennedy.
Here.
Alderman Bukovich. Alderman Doherty. Alderman Gelhard.
Here.
Alderman Wheezy.
Here.
Alderman Schmelzling.
Here.
Alderman Shaw.
All right. Just a reminder to all the members of the council, having attended the last meeting virtually, I had trouble hearing some people when I was watching on the Zoom. So if you could remember or make sure the little red light is coming on by your microphone when you speak. All right. First item is public comment. Glendale residents, business owners and property owners are invited to speak to the council on items that are not on tonight's agenda, but are within the city's ability to regulate or control. Is there anyone wishing to address a non-agenda item? Thank you. Want to step up to the table? And if you, we know you Dan, but for the records, would you please introduce yourself and tell us your address before you speak?
Close enough.
They're talking.
No, push, push the little red button or whatever's red. It should be unmuted then. Want to talk? Just start talking and see if it. Well, no, the, the, I mean, his microphone. Have you talk and see if the microphone catches you, so.
Okay, Daniel Hess, 2055 West Green Tree Road. I wanted to talk about the address of the home at 2130 Edward Lane. That's a primary was a primary, a private resident, Tommy and Cass. Simon lived in there. They died a little over 10 years ago. Now that's.
One second, Dan. We have some people on the line if you could please mute. Thank you. Go ahead. Sorry, Dan.
Okay, no problem. And so that's, there's several people have moved in there. And now it's a group home. And I'm not sure when it became a group home or who got involved. I know the lady next door, Angie Lammick, is 96 and she's petrified of having those next door because they burned down a group home in Whitefish Bay. But people across the street, they walk their dog all the time. They never knew nothing about this thing becoming a group home. So how the word got out, I'm sure. But anyway, after whatever the approval was, I know there's an egress on the west side of the house. So there's got to be people living in the basement. Tommy and Cass had nothing done in the basement. So, you know, what do you got? I'm guessing there's what 10 girls in that place? I've never heard a number. So that'd be fun, just trying to get 10 girls and bath and a half and a house done. I know Libby that owns Libby Montana, she was a family of seven girls. So I can imagine what it's like trying to get, you know, everybody ready to school. But anyway, my, my, my comment is after school was out this spring, there were six brown trash at the head of this driveway and they were there for 10 days. Why they were there and why so many? I don't know. And then the lawn was never mowed for several weeks after school was out. So, and then also the word is the rabbi of who owns it? What is that? I'm going to say it wrong. Lubavitch?
Lubavitch.
Lubavitch. Anyway, apparently he brings in garbage on top of the garbage that's there on Thursday. So I don't know if that's kosher or not, or what's, what's going on with there. But anyway, it's, it's an interesting scenario, but to have six trash there for 10 days and nobody monitoring. So somebody has to get after the owner and clean that thing up. And they're, and Friday, a lot of times their trash bins are still out there. Everybody else in the street and in Glendale already cleaned theirs up on Thursday night. So whatever, I don't know who department or who wants to talk to them or what, but something needs to be done.
You just let the city administrator know the address again and then she can work with staff.
And the street?
Is Edward, the West Edward Lane. That's on the backside of that lake across the street from me.
Thank you.
So, okay, thanks for your time.
Thank you, Dan. Appreciate it. The city administrator will work with staff on that tomorrow. All right. Anyone else wishing to speak during public comment? All right. Seeing no one, we'll move on to the next item. We have with us for the first time in 17 years, there is a new superintendent of the Glendale River Hills School District. And I'd like to welcome Allison Weiss. Let's go up and introduce yourself to the mayor and members of the council.
Good evening. Thank you so much for inviting me. I'm really excited to be in Glendale. I am a Racine graduate. I still live in the city of Racine. My children go there. That's where I began my career. And then I, after much of my career in Racine, I moved on to Mesquite and to Lake Geneva. And I have to tell you, it feels really good to be back in a community like Glendale. It feels much more like home. It feels much more like the students that I always wanted to be advocates for when I went into education. So I'm really excited about this opportunity. As, as Ms. Bukovich knows, I put it all out there, my application, I just talked about my story, my life experiences, what led me to this place and why I felt like this place was the right place for me. And it all worked out. So I'm really excited to work with the team. Like you said, I started July 1st, so pretty new still. I had some time off. I was recent, recently got married. So I had about a week off. So we're getting really into planning for teachers coming back for all the new staff that we're hiring. But the team in Glendale is pretty fabulous and I'm really excited to work with the four principals and the other central office staff and starting to get to know some of the teachers as they start to trickle in from summer. And so it's been a really welcoming community and a really welcoming school community as well. So I'm just really, really excited to be here and do some good work. Some work around strategic planning, the focus on equity is really exciting. I know I've said exciting probably 12 times. I just realized, but it really is. It's an opportunity to have some quick wins and do some really good work for students. So just happy to be here.
Appreciate you coming tonight and introducing yourself. I spent nine years on the school board before becoming mayor. And all three of my kids came through the Glendale River Hills School District and then Nicolay. And, you know, they've, they've all gotten a wonderful education. So pleased to have you here. Open up to questions if any members of the council want to ask questions. Alderman Bukovich?
When we were going through the process of interviewing, I'm on the school board if no one knows. But when we were going on the interview on the process of that, she was my number one pick from 12, from the list of 12, she really like encompassed what Glendale is all about in that school district, wanting to work with not just the district, but also city, wanting to make sure that she was part of the city. You know, and, and just making sure that she asked us questions about us and not just saying, this is what I am and I'm going to come in and this is my agenda. She really wanted to hear what our agenda was, what the board's agenda was, and even the community and the community, out of all the people that we interviewed, the community really embraced her. So I am glad to see Ms. Weiss. I work with her on the school board side. I, I, I look forward to seeing what she's going to do on that side of it. I just, she is amazing. And we are lucky as a community to have her because, I mean, we had a bunch of big people who really wanted this job, big name people, and she fit us so well.
Any questions from other members of the council?
Big comment.
Alderman Schmelzling.
Very happy to having you start. I know I've had a rougher time with Glen Hills School District with my two children. And it's, it's great to see some fresh faces to really drive some, I would say, changes. And it's, it's such an important part of what our city has as an asset is our school district. So thank you.
And I guess I'll just add in, we do a lot of partnering with the schools. You know, we have a city park where we partner with Nicolay to build a big chunk of it, as well as Milwaukee School of Engineering. And then we do work collaboratively with the Glendale River Hills School District on our 4th of July. There's usually a lot of children's activities. We do movies in the Glen or where there are children's movies. We, we really try to have a lot of family friendly activities and we tend to work with the schools a large part to, to publicize those and make sure that families know that they're out there. So you'll, you, you will throughout the three year, get stuff from the city asking if you can put it in the Thursday folder. And, you know, we'll, we'll ask you to make sure that the schools become one of the means that we use to publicize things that we try to do. But also the school district has a seat on Welcome to Glendale, which is our Convention and Visitors Bureau. So the schools get to help, you know, somebody representing the school district gets to help make a decisions about how we market Glendale, how we bring people in to fill up our hotels and needed our restaurants and attend our events. So we, we really do collaborate with both Nicolay and Glendale River Hills, so.
Research on social media. So I've seen all the events and the Welcome to Glendale and trying to beef up our social media a little bit. So share some of those things on our pages and I look forward to that.
Yeah, we'll, we'll make sure we introduce you to Ann Doosier, who heads up Welcome to Glendale. Yeah.
Thanks.
And the children's parade will be back next year for the 4th of July.
Our own children will be happy about that. They like to tag along and do school things with me.
Wonderful. Any other questions or comments? All right. Well, welcome and thank you so much for coming tonight.
Thanks for inviting me.
Sure. Okay. Item four is the consent agenda. There are five items on the consent agenda. One of them, I do just want to make a comment. We had a resignation from the plan commission. And I've asked our alternate to assume the permanent role. So that is item 4C is confirmation of plan commission appointment. It's somebody you've already appointed as an alternate. I'm just asking to move that person into a permanent position. I do plan to talk to several people in the next two weeks and to name at our next meeting an alternate again. So, so is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
I'm moved.
Moved by Alderman Shaw is her second.
Second.
Second of Alderman Doherty. Any questions or discussion? Okay, without objection, the consent agenda is adopted. New business, item 5A, recommendation from the library review committee. Ms. Astrum?
For you is a letter from the committee chair, Katie Wood, and gave a background of the process that the library review committee went through. Further explains their recommendation. They felt the best way to go through the recommendation was to look at pros and cons of whether the city of Glendale was to go with their own library or to go with the alternative scenario that recently became available with a new North Shore Library in Bayside. After a lot of discussion, the committee also felt it was important, not just to give you that information, but to request that you hold a public hearing for comment from the public regarding both scenarios for you to have a better determination as the second scenario was not necessarily identified as an option through their survey. I had indicated that we would be able to do advertisements in the North Shore now, social media and the electronic city newsletter as a means to get into people. One of the things that we will want to consider is that I wouldn't schedule a public hearing more than 30 days out. So probably your first meeting in September would be ideal and we can get items published quickly and multiple times to let people know that this public hearing would be occurring. So item 5B on your agenda is to schedule a public hearing if you so wish.
Okay, thank you. So the, the first thing is I want to say thank you to the library review committee. I did go to their last meeting. I actually went to another meeting early on when they first were, were forming to answer questions and talk with them about their charge. I know we expressed, you know, the, the seven of us expressed a lot of frustration in the way negotiations had gone with the North Shore Library. And we were unanimous in our decision to give notice to leave the North Shore Library. And, you know, we did our best to communicate that out to the public. As the library, again, the library review committee understood why we had left the North Shore Library and they've set out diligently to work on suggestions for us as to how to move forward as a community. And one of the things they found, and this was highlighted in the letter, was that many people in the community did not understand why we gave notice. So despite all the social media and putting things in the newsletter and having things on the website and the Facebook page and everything else, people just did not understand why we left. So there are many people that think we're still in the North Shore Library. Actually, we technically still are in the North Shore Library for another two and a half years or two years. But the, there was definitely concerns raised by a lot of folks in the community that just didn't understand. When the library review committee was about ready to come up with their final recommendation, which was to be a library in the city of Glendale and to give us directions and, and advice on how to move forward, it was literally the week they were supposed to have their meeting is when we found out about the Bayside development. And I, I know there are a few people on the committee that were concerned. You know, did we know about this all along? And I assured them that we did not, right? We had given our notice to leave the North Shore Library. And, you know, we, you know, had every intention of moving forward with a library of our own. And if we follow their recommendation and the community that comes out of the hearing and tells us that's what we should do, then, then, you know, that would be what we would do. However, this other opportunity did come up. I called the chair, her name is Katie. I called Katie and I said, can you cancel your meeting tonight? There is a development that's going to be released in about two days that may change the recommendation from the library committee. She did cancel the meeting. She rescheduled it for about two weeks later. It gave time for Bayside's development to be, to be disclosed to the public and to have its first hearing. Ms. Astrum, can you give us an update on where the Bayside development is?
It has gone through its initial review at their plan commission level or CD. I'm not sure which. However, it's been indicated to me that this is far different than the reaction they received from the last development for that corner. This has had very minimal comments on it of any sort. And they feel that this will most likely be proceeding on a timely basis.
Thank you. And so now we're faced with the library committee giving us a recommendation for how to move forward with a library of our own. However, this other opportunity has come up and I do want to thank the members of the library review committee for taking a brief pause there in order to look at the other opportunity. I, I support wholeheartedly their recommendation to have a public hearing. I think it is definitely the right thing to do. I think we need to publicize it as the city administrator has said, and listen to members of the public. You have these two options. One would be another library in Glendale that is solely ours, which is going to be more expensive and is going to require us to go out to referendum. It's going to be more expensive capital wise. It's going to be more expensive operating expenses wise as well. The, the new opportunity that's come up would be a new four community library. And, you know, as Rachel and I have talked with folks in the other communities, we have been insistent, it will be an entirely new agreement, an entirely new formula. It will not be the North Shore Library, you know, version 2.0. It is going to be an entirely new agreement. For, for the first thing, the library will own its own space. Right? There will be some upfront investment from all four communities as well as the contribution from the developer. But that library space will be given to the library. It will be their own space. And it will be operated differently than we operate the current library. But what this new opportunity does present is four libraries within proximity to Glendale. The new North Shore Library would be in Bayside. There is a Brown Deer Library that's part of the county system. There's the Villard Library on the southwest side and the Whitefish Bay Library east of us. So it'd be four libraries that are very close to Glendale, but there would not be one in the city. And so I absolutely applaud the library review committee for the work they've done. And, you know, I, I really hope that we get a significant turnout for our public hearing on September 13th so that we can move forward with, with input from the public. So that's my contribution to this conversation and I'll open it up now to members of the council who'd like to speak. Alderman Doherty?
Like to know, what are we going to do as far as if we were going to go forward in agreement? I hate to have time keep burning off the clock, so to speak. And we end up talking about, I guess I'd like to have some ideas what a potential agreement would look like because I'd hate to not be working on a Glendale option, then corner ourselves on time. And then we can't get forward in a North Shore Library agreement.
I understand you're going to have a closed session at your next council meeting that should give you a lot of direction as to where I feel we're at.
Alderman Wheezy?
Thank you. Doing, and I apologize, I don't have, I left some pages on my printer. I don't have the computer in front of me. So, and Alderman Schmelzling, you know, gave me a little information. But of concern is in the library, the review committee commentary, they cited a recommended square footage for a four community library that is substantially larger than what is current in the Bayside plan. So by, Steve, was it roughly 10,000 square feet?
Yeah, that's.
Yeah.
Thereabouts.
10,000 is what they're suggesting. So that's a significant size differential. And so looking at that, you know, to me, that causes concern. If there's no possibility for, or potential, we don't know. I don't know if it's possible, but it doesn't seem like there's any potential for expansion. It's reliant on outdoor facilities. That while that's great in the warmer months, winter, that, that goes away unless you want to build snowmen. But, I mean, those are things that I think we do, I think at the public hearing, I think is very, very important to bring those facts forward.
Thank you.
I can address the square footage issue. The director of Milwaukee County Federated Library System had been attending our last two meetings and, and was extremely informative. The square footage of a building has a lot of factors that go into it and depends on population. One of the questions I had asked that I, I don't know the best answer for, and they didn't really have one. They've always done it just by base population. But my question was population of use or population of, of the communities? Because they, they are slightly different right now. About 50% of our total community population between the four communities utilizes the library at any time, which is why overall the, the square footage we have has been, it hasn't been great, but it's been acceptable because we've been utilizing it. And that is 16,000 square feet. So the Bayside option is increasing quite a bit from that option. And then a step further, the question that was asked was, does this new square footage calculation include the reduction that is anticipated and has been experienced by many libraries on the media side? Being that DVDs are not necessarily something that is highly sought after anymore, VHS, things like that. So in a lot of cases, media racks are being reduced. And does this calculation take in how new libraries are going to be functioning as we move forward in the years? Because it won't be as much of, it will be about the items. There will be books, all of those things, but it's a lot about programming. And they, and he did highlight that a lot of visitors go to specific libraries for their programming. So we want to make sure that that is a major component of any joint library is that we are doing substantial, significant, excellent programming.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from members of the, of the council? Alderman Gelhard?
I'm in favor of a, of a public hearing, but I don't know that we should have it as soon as we're contemplating. The concern being that the Bayside development is far from being a done deal. And I'm worried that if we have this public hearing and everyone throws their weight into the, the Bayside situation and all of a sudden that doesn't materialize or there's factors that come into play that make us, you know, think we don't want to, you know, go along with it. Then we've, you know, kind of wasted a lot of time where we could have been working on a potential library in Glendale. So that's, that's the only concern I have is setting up that public meeting so soon when we don't really have a lot of the details about the Bayside develop.
Or sorry, city administrator would like to respond to that?
Yes, and I completely understand as we've been trying to do this tandem game even for the last two, two weeks. One of the things that we have indicated to Bayside and that the library board also indicated to Bayside to make sure that it was something to move forward was that they're going to have to have substantial completion of their process by the end of October as well, knowing that Glendale has to make a decision to know in or out by, by that time. So that we know if we are moving forward with a, a referendum question or not, we can't wait on that. So ultimately, we, we are going to need to have information and have an idea of which way we might want to go depending and hear from the public so that by the end of October, we're kind of making that yea or nay decision.
Alderman Bukovich, you had your hand up a moment ago.
Yeah. I just wanted to.
Yeah, said it. I just want to ask what the purpose of the, the public hearing is. Is it to get feedback or is it to inform? Cause there's, that's two different things. If we are trying to give feedback on what we should do, that's one thing. But if we're trying to let them know what we're actually doing, because originally you said, and a lot of people didn't know. So I guess that is what I would be looking at, which, what's the purpose of the public hearing? You know, they might have questions or want to know what our options, but I don't think, I agree with Alderman Gelhard. This is not the time to decide one way or the other. I think if we're going to have a public hearing, this is a public hearing to inform on the two, the option that we decided and then give them the information about base, the Bayside deal and then get some feedback, but there won't be a decision at that time.
Correct. I'm not, we are not looking for a decision from the council at the September 13th meeting. We are just looking for you to get your input from the public. Yes, the public does need to have that backstory regurgitated another time, making sure that everyone has that information. And then from there, be able to ask their questions. And there may be more follow-up that needs to be done from there. But we also need to see a, a few things. And we've talked about this publicly as well. We would need to see the other communities commit first. And we would need to see that the Bayside development truly is moving forward. Not that we're committing to something that could fall apart.
And I do appreciate specifically the other communities having to commit first. Cause in the previous library negotiations, we, we actually approved two different versions of the negotiation or of the agreement that were negotiated by staff and only to have other communities vote them down. And so I, I think this, yes, we're, we're in the position now where the other communities are going to need to say that they're all three in before we decide. I would absolutely agree with that. Alderman Schmelzling?
A couple of questions. One with the, the Bayside development. How firm is their design at this point? Cause we're talking about size. It seems as though all I've seen is there'll be a library in the first floor with a courtyard and a certain size was allocated to it. Is that set in stone? Or can we come to them and say, well, based on the population proposals and other factors in our library committee, we recommend something different and potentially the other communities might have similar feedback.
The, the size is, is fairly set in stone. And the, what, what the layout is, what the design is interior, that would be something that the library director and library board have say over, that they would work together with the developer on what would be necessary and how it lays out. That has not been determined yet. The actual layout and.
Location and footprint though is.
That is correct.
Okay. Also echoing some of the other council members. I, I remember we first thought we would do more info sessions through some of our, you know, Music in the Glen or Rip Your Bash or potentially we do something prior to this public hearing to make sure that we have an informed group of people if they want to come listen and then come back and provide their feedback after they let it set in. I, I felt like that was the approach that might be beneficial. So again, I, I think if we just ask people to come and give their opinions without having the full facts, this isn't a popularity contest type thing.
Correct. And so they, they may need to have some more questions. We will still have every, we will have items on the website. We will encourage people to contact their older people. And they can always contact my office and talk with people. And we can work through some of those questions and encourage them to attend the public hearing as well to learn more. We always encourage public participation.
Other comments from members of the council? All right. We have a recommendation from the library review committee that we hold a public hearing and a recommendation from staff that that hearing be scheduled for Monday, September 13th. I guess it would be at the beginning of this meeting, beginning of our common council meeting. Can I have a motion to that effect, please? Moved by Alderman Wheezy, second of Alderman Bukovich. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of scheduling a public hearing on the library? Please say aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Okay. These next two items. Okay. Nevermind. I was going to ask if we could take them together, but I realize they actually are separate enough. So item 5C is ordinance amending and recreating section 9.2.16 of the Code of. of the code of ordinances pertaining to water mains and laterals. This is mandatory replacement of lead-based water service lines.
And as you uh, may recall, we recently approved utilization of ARPA funds and a Wisconsin DNR grant to be able to replace those lead laterals. Uh, this just gives us one more mechanism to to tell the residents, this isn't a choice. We're we're coming in, we're making your water safer and you you need to allow us to do this. Uh, so uh, it's all, it it's not, though it says within the ordinance that they would have to pay for it, that's if they don't work with us on this process, then they would have to do it. They're better off just saying thank you.
Essentially, we're saying that the any lead service lines have to be replaced.
Yes.
And the city will use the federal funding we're getting to do it.
Yes.
If you don't let the city do it, then you are required to do it on your own.
Correct.
Got it. All right, any questions or comments before I ask for a motion? All right, is there a motion to adopt? Oh, sorry, Alderman Weezy?
Thank you. Uh, having a son, having uh, my son's old home in Wauwatosa had a lead lateral. And uh, while undisturbed, it wasn't a big problem. Would this, you know, but there was plumbing problems beyond that. So once inside of the house, you know, the city's off, you know, their hands are off in that, correct? That this is simply bringing the water into the water main or the water meter, correct?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
All right, is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Moved.
Move by Alderman Doherty, is there a second? Second, second of Alderman Gelhard, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting the ordinance, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose now. Motion carries. Next item is also regarding water. This is ordinance creating section nine point one point five of the code of ordinances pertaining to water utility rates and regulations. This has to do with water main tapping.
So what's been happening uh, is we've had some developments and they uh, are either new or they're doing a new water main of this is a good and a bad example at the same time. So UW Credit Union is building a new building right next to their old building, so they need a new water main. They go, they tap the water main. They don't do it with city staff. They don't inform us of it. Something goes wrong and we have to shut down three to six other businesses. Yeah, because we have to shut down the water and fix what they broke. This makes it uh, a process where they have to have staff on site. They have to follow a process. They have to schedule it. And then we can ensure that everything is done in a manner that is of work, uh, proper workmanship. And if they do not, there is a consequence.
I noticed this has a permit and a permit fee. Do we not currently require a permit?
We require a permit. Now, we just have not had any um, consequences to not following through and issuing the permit. And so this is.
Right now, the consequence is a double permit fee, and what we're saying here is the consequence could be
More.
Not right, plus all the cost of all the damages.
Correct.
Okay. All right, any questions from members of the council before I ask for motion? Alderman Schmelzing?
It seemed very detailed in the uh, section D specifications, almost down to like almost a a manual. Is is that intended? Or was that more just to give guidance? I just want to make sure this doesn't change in two years due to some new standards and then we have to update the ordinances.
The specifications, I believe, were utilized, uh, we, we um, used them from Fox Point. Uh, this is a similar ordinance to what they have. They're on our same water commission uh, line, so it all fits together that way.
Okay, so we're not going to have like something changing to fifteen minutes in the next two years as a new standard comes out?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? All right, is there a motion to adopt the ordinance? Move by Alderman Weezy, second of Alderman Gelhard. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, next item is resolution approving stormwater management plan and authorizing the connection of a Glendale property to the city of Milwaukee Storm Sewer.
Uh, the Glendale Partners property at the very south end of the city uh, borders the city of Milwaukee. Uh, right next to them is actually the Home Depot that borders the city of Glendale. Home Depot Stormwater Pond is in Glendale. Glendale Partners Stormwater Pond would be in Milwaukee. This agreement uh, just identifies who is the responsible community for the stormwater regulations as they are not exactly the same. They're very close because we both work with MMSD. However, uh, this puts uh, the regulations on the city of Milwaukee, and if the city of Milwaukee is unable to uh, have compliance in the manner of which they would like, we will assist in getting them compliant.
Any questions for, from members of the council? All right, is there a motion then to adopt the resolution? Move Alderman Schmelzing, is there a second? Second, Baldomir Vukovich, any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Next item, discussion on speed reduction efforts in residential areas.
Can we swap the next two items? Uh, the discussion on police organizational study. Um, we do have the consultant on the line, and I just thought if we could um, go through the police organizational study first. The other one is uh, staff, and so we can have that discussion after.
Okay, we'll move on then to five G review and discussion on the police organizational study report from Matrix Consulting Group.
Okay, thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Uh, I'm Richard Brady from Matrix Consulting Group. And uh, with me are two of the other members of our project team, Ian Brady and John Scruggs. Um, we've developed a quick PowerPoint to uh, run through the results of the study. We'll take maybe about fifteen minutes to talk through what we came up with the study and then we'll take your uh, your questions. Um, so let me get started here with this. So again, thank you for giving us this opportunity, not only to do the study, but to present the results uh, here this evening for you. Uh, we began the study in the spring and we've developed the uh, the report in the last month or so. Uh, I want to just quickly uh, update you on what the scope of work was and how the study was conducted. We, it, we were commissioned to look at law enforcement services uh, in the community and to compare those to best practices and to other communities. Uh, but uh, Glendale is unique, so most of our analysis was really based on the uh, service uh, targets for the city and uh, how good a job you were doing in meeting those uh, service targets in each one of those areas. Uh, so a key output of all of this was to develop a staffing analysis for you. Um, but important today is not just staffing, but everything else that is associated with effective policing and its interaction with the community, including transparency, how the community support, uh, training, uh, its policies, et cetera. In conducting the studies, we uh, can had uh, extensive interviews with police department personnel. We had onsite interviews uh, over a three day period with patrol personnel. Uh, we interviewed the council. We interviewed a couple of representatives, including the chair of the police commission. Uh, we also had a community listening session, and I think in part because that wasn't well in uh, attended. Uh, we, which is difficult to do in COVID situations. It was a virtual setting. We developed an online survey, uh, which I'm going to give you the summary of right now. We had a hundred ninety-two responses, which is uh, really uh, excellent. It was promoted through uh, the cities and department's social media and other mechanisms, and we think almost two hundred is a good uh, level of response. Uh, overwhelmingly, respondents were really positive about how safe they feel about the responsiveness of the police department, the problems, uh, about being visible in the community and uh, suggestions and things like that. And they felt the leadership of the department was uh, strong and uh, engaged with the community and listening to the community. In spite of that, almost half, I think it was forty-six percent of the respondents believed that crime was getting worse in the city. However, they believe the department is addressing those problems uh, proactively through a a series of means and and being proactive in the community. Uh, I'm going to turn it over to Ian now, and he can fill you in on what we came up with uh, in our analysis of field services or patrol. Ian?
So in addition to the input that we conducted, which includes uh, doing ride-alongs uh, throughout the city. We uh, a significant part of looking at patrol is is taking the uh, CAD RMS data, the computer dispatch data and using that to construct a picture of what patrol uh, workload looks like as far as the nine-one-one calls and other workload coming into the department that they have to go out and respond to uh, in comparison to their capacity to handle it. So the officers, once you account for the shift schedule, leave uh, such as vacation time, six time, et cetera, training, um, how much time they're actually out there and able to respond to those workflows. So the department uh, in the year of data that we used, which was twenty nineteen, uh, given that twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one uh, weird years because of COVID, um, in that year, uh, the department spun to almost exactly nine thousand uh, community generated calls to service, so not self-initiative activity, but solely uh, workload that the community uh, is asking for response to. Uh, and based on the time that it takes to handle that, including, you know, backup units, reports, uh, report writing, et cetera. Um, those responses occupy about twenty-nine percent of uh, officers' time. So um, that means that seventy-one percent of that time officers are able to be proactive, they're able to uh, conduct uh, community-oriented policing, engage crime suppression activities, things like that. And that is an exceptional level of of productivity that we really rarely see in our work. Um, higher than probably ninety-seven, ninety-eight percent of the departments that we work with. So that really shows that there's an exceptionally high level of service uh, that Glendale receives. And that's echoed also in part by uh, the response times, not just to the high priority incidents, but to the lower priority incidents as well. Um, and a lot of self-initiative activity is also conducted. Uh, and when you factor that in, about thirty-eight percent of their time uh, overall is utilized on either that community-generated workload or the self-initiated workload. Uh, you can see that in the chart there where percentage is percentage of the time that is utilized either on that community-generated calls or the self-initiated activity. I, you can see that throughout the day, um, much higher simply because uh, there's not as much activity and there's not as many opportunities to be proactive with, when that, within that activity at night. Um, you're not really as able to engage with the community at at two AM. So while this is uh, seeing what you're finding, the activities largely used, it also shows that you know, there's only so many opportunities to use that uh, proactive time. Can you hear the next slide?
Could I interrupt with a question here? Um, you're talking in rather a sort of technical terms of self-initiated activity and proactive time. Wondering if you could give us some concrete examples of what what that would look like?
Yep, so uh, uh, proactive time is anything that the officer is uh, is is doing out of their own initiative. So it could be a traffic stop, it could be them uh, going down the street and seeing uh, any suspicious uh, activity, cars, anything that they are seeing and then acting on. Uh, it could be like a proactive policing assignment such as um, doing patrols uh, for visibility in a certain neighborhood. Uh, doing field interviews, it could be getting out of the car and doing uh, foot patrol within the community. Anything that's not uh, a call coming in and then handling it.
And so were you indicating that 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 seventy-one percent of their time is engaged fully that way, or that there were many opportunities for them to engage in proactive activities?
Yeah, the the seventy-one percent is uncommitted time, so it's the opportunity to engage in in those kind of proactive activities.
Okay, and did you come up with a finding on how much of that time actually gets utilized directly toward um, not uncommitted activities?
Hmm, yeah, so uh, thirty-eight percent of time is either the community-generated or the proactive time. So that would mean that about uh, nine percent of that or nine percent of the hundred percent. I I realize it's getting a little confusing with the percentages, but um, there's simply so much time that even when you factor in the proactive time, which is done at a very high rate as far as traffic stops, et cetera, you're still not able to get anywhere near a hundred percent. And 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 part of that is just the fact that, you know, during nighttime hours, it's not as many opportunities to deal with it. But even during those daytime hours, um, there's so much proactive time that you're still only reaching sixty, fifty-eight, up to seventy percent of time able to be utilized for proactive policing.
Thank you.
Excellent. So uh, like I mentioned, the self-initiative activity is conducted at very high rates. Um, traffic stops for officer are at an exceptionally high rate. Uh, it shows that they're really making use of that time. Um, but even still, given that even with all the opportunities, there's only so many opportunities to conduct that kind of proactive policing. And there's still a significant portion of time just that there isn't really an ability to find a uh, effective use for it proactively. So you have the opportunity to retain the current uh, exceptionally high service level and reassign up to two officers to uh, to to uh, different functions. You could assign one to uh, the currently unfilled community outreach position and one to a flexibly deployed unit that could do a variety of activities related to uh, uh, crime suppression investigative support and still be able to meet minimum staffing levels consistently and retain those high uh, service levels for patrol.
Okay, so with, we can take questions after the whole presentation, but if there are no additional questions now. Uh, I'm going to turn it over to John, who's going to discuss uh, the other parts of the organization, detectives and the administrative functions as well as the policy training and other uh, functions within the police department that we examined. John?
Name. So we looked at detective and support functions, and uh, here's our primary findings. Uh, the Texas function without uh, direct supervision, supervision. And what I mean by that is there are four detectives, but there's not a sergeant above them or lieutenant, but they may report directly to the captain. And that's fairly unusual. Um, usually uh, in a detective uh, unit like this, you would have direct supervision of either sergeant or lieutenant. Uh, while caseloads are all were fairly low for uh, detectives, uh, we still believe that um, they have uh, the ability to do um more to cases they have with some direct supervision, uh, and then also better screening of the cases that they currently work. We also found there in our uh, review that um, though they do have a case management software, they're using Microsoft Access for that. It doesn't track enough of the information to uh, really allow for proper management of cases. They they can't really determine how long a case has been active easily. What a detective's role was in a particular case, so even if a detective went out and helped process a crime scene, it wouldn't differentiate that from when they were assigned to work a a broken case. Um, so there was no real easy way to do that. So uh, they definitely do um, acquire a more effective case management software. Um, and then we noted uh, you know, in job descriptions for public support, the counter has two different classifications. And some of this is a holdover for when they actually did jail supervision. So a couple of them are actually certified to be jailers, um, so they have that classification. They really just need to merge it because that's not the the key role that they provide at this point. Um, print uh, counter staff also um, lack direct supervision, so they report to the on-duty sergeant. However, there there is no one overall in charge of them, and so whatever sergeant is uh, on at the time is the sergeant that they report to. So we think that the executive assistant should provide that uh, direct supervision. Uh, the tool vehicle we looked at the fleet um, is in very good condition, fairly low mileage. Um, but what we did notice, it was the rotation plan originally is about three years. And generally, most police departments rotate their cars at four to five years at a hundred thousand to a hundred twenty-five thousand miles, and that really depends on a lot of different variables. Uh, the amount of mileage of vehicle gets per year or the the obviously, the amount of uh, use it gets. Um, so uh, though, though we think that they need to increase their vehicle replacement targets, we also believe sometimes there's a shortage of vehicles. If there's two or three in the shop or uh, at a specialized event, then they have a hard time at shift change, uh, applying enough cars to actually field officers to go out. Next slide.
Actually, before you go to answer the next slide, I have a question. You said while caseloads are low, um, created detective sergeant position to provide new supervision, how how low are the caseloads? Or what what was your analysis?
Well, our analysis is, so they currently have four detectives assigned. And in our analysis from the data that we could gather, we think the caseload is more equal to about three detectives. Um, so we look at, we give a caseload time allotment on the type of case it is. So like a serious assault would dedicate more time uh, for an investigation. And then a low-level crime might be like, you know, uh, half of that. And so.
What is a typical caseload per detective? Or what what, I guess, what is ideal? If you were looking at like, what's the ideal situation? How many cases per detective?
There isn't a specific easy answer to that because it's time, it depends on the type. There isn't a specific easy answer to that because it's time. It depends on the type of cases they they have. So. For example, if you had a burglary detective and and it's, I guess I should step back one thing. The detectives at your agency actually investigate all types of crime. So some places have a specialized detective. They only do assault cases or only do robberies. So your your detectives are all generals. And so to do the analysis, we actually broke out how many burglaries. That we thought they would investigate in a year, how many assaults, homicides, those things. And we actually came up with a number of hours that would be what I would say generally a detective can handle. General sign is somewhere between eight and twelve cases a month. But that's again, we do a little more specialized analysis, breaking it down by the actual case type.
If I can add something to that, in addition to the data analytics on. On detectives, we also conducted interviews with each one of them. And so we had that additional insight.
And I could also add on to that. The detectives also do crime scene analysis. They take photos. So. They do a number of things that aren't just detective type work. But we counted all that.
So in your in your findings, how much of what our detectives are doing is actually for our neighboring communities, which most of which don't have detectives? Where the only city where the bigger force, I'm just curious, how much are we picking up from other communities and how much is is our own crime cases we're working on?
It's very little, both in terms of our findings when we actually interviewed them. So that was a point in time. But also with that data analytics over more than a year, it was really quite low.
Quite low in terms of other communities work that was being done by our detectives.
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
And then on. Our policies and training. So we think there's room to expand and in some D I versi equity inclusion. For the the support services captain where they could take on that role a little stronger. We looked at policies on diversity equity inclusion and found there were not a lot of policies, not a lot of formalized plan. There was no plan going forward of how that would occur. So we made recommendation to have a plan and actually have the support services captain addressing policies on that. We also noted, you know, one of the things we do is we look at, you know, the website for the police department and some of the. Data they put out to the community and we noted that there's a lot of things that they could publicly put out there that. Would help the community better understand what's going on with the police department. And so there's a little lack of transparency. And a lot of times people, when they don't have information, they assume things and the police department is doing a very good job with a lot of the things that we looked at. But I don't know that public would really know that without them putting out an information, maybe even on their website. For example, there's very few internal affairs complaints. And I think the community would really like to know that. There may be some assumptions, but that's data they could put out publicly saying. This is how many investigated this year and that's very few. So that's it's good to know. And then your pursuit policy. It's very, I would say lenient. Where the nation is going and major law enforcement groups around the country are really going to a more restrictive policy on pursuits. And the reason for this is the police officer can't control what the suspect does. So. If you're trying to stop somebody for a minor traffic violation and like a taillight out or expired tags and they take off at eighty or ninety miles an hour. Even if you terminate the pursuit, it's already initiated or you're into pursuit. It becomes more dangerous as time goes on. And there's been a number of studies that every minute a pursuit goes on, the more likely it's going to end in a crash. And that crash could be an innocent civilian. I know that folks will say, well, if we don't pull them over for these minor violations. You know, this person could have committed a major crime, but a lot of findings are it's still just a minor traffic violation and people will run for just that reason. And so maybe a more limited pursuit policy would reduce your liability and. And.
Okay. The last area we looked at was the department's organizational structure. So as you know, there were some relatively recent changes. In the organizational command staff structure of the department that. Created lieutenant's position as watch commanders and it had some real positives associated with it. Created positions who could handle management responsibilities either as a primary or collateral duty type of responsibility. And so. Spread that around more easily, but there were some negative consequences with associated with that too. A couple of functions, as John just mentioned, both in detectives and on the front desk, they lack direct supervision. It's a responsibility of. Captains in both of those instances. So there's no direct first line supervision. In spite of that, there's some really low spans of control that. Exists within the department and administrative functions or. Support for administrative issues that need to be handled. Are not well distributed. So you've got some of the lieutenants and captains with extensive. Collateral responsibilities upon which this whole system is based and particularly at the lieutenant levels, others that are the reverse. So. We looked at some short term and long range opportunities here to. Restructure the department and reassign some of those duties. And in the short term, certainly some reassignment of duties could help free up particularly the support services captain, but also the operations captain. To focus more on operations, which is a real issue here. One of those opportunities would be to. Have the executive assistant. I realize you're having some turnover and that's soon, but the executive assistant handle first line supervision for the front desk. But in the medium term, I guess you could say we're urging you to consider. An organizational structure that doesn't have constant watch command by lieutenants. You are a small field services function. You've got first line supervision of relatively few people, three, four, five people in field by a sergeant. And then also by a lieutenant, which is a small span of control for both of those positions. And. Even in the short term, by reassigning lieutenants in one of a couple of ways that we looked at. Having one of them in charge of it, helping with administrative responsibilities and internal affairs and responsibility for detectives. Would be one approach and recognizing that there's other staff available during the daytime, leaving watch commanders around in the. The early shift and the late shift, the evening shift and the early morning hour shift to. Provide some management coverage that doesn't exist during those hours compared to the daytime. Longer term, though, I think you have opportunities to. More fundamentally change the organization. Because many of the things that are assigned administratively to lieutenants and first line supervision of things like detectives or internal affairs investigations, et cetera. Don't actually require somebody of lieutenant's level. Many departments your size, many departments even larger than you have that as sergeant responsibilities. So we've given you short term and long range food for thought on this. Certainly the. Reallocation of roles and responsibilities as that relates to lieutenants would be subject to collective bargaining. But I think it's it's something that would, I guess you would say rationalize the organization compared to its size and level of responsibility. And the number of people we have, I think we're we're saying that you've got the right number of command and supervisory positions, but. The allocation of roles is unequal and you could accomplish some of the roles at a lower level than a lieutenant. Lastly, we looked at the police commission itself, looked at their roles. We interviewed the chair and one other person on the police commission and. And think that within Wisconsin law, there are opportunities for them to play more of an advisory role. I mean, it's 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 a lot for the common council to be focusing on all the things that you have to focus on. And not having the opportunity to do a deeper dive on the things related to policies. Training opportunities to improve the department. And that's really one of the roles that the police commission have besides its. Role in terms of the promotional processes and disciplinary processes in the light and other. Police commissions do that, realizing that there's a wide range of duties out there and different provisions in the law for different roles out there. But in advisory capacity. They've got a lot of opportunities, I think, given that that's their sole focus within the city. I think that's something that they should consider, you should consider. Which would also require some additional training, orientation upon assignment and follow up training as. Their participation increases over time. So that in, I think, a fifteen minute nutshell is is our report and would like to answer any questions that you may have about it.
Ask my questions as we went along. So open up to members of the council. Anybody have questions they want to ask? Alderman Weezy.
Thank you. This is Aimee Moore at Chief Ferguson. Chief, with the. Officer that is assigned at Nicolay, is that officer going to be returning to that position for this coming school year? Okay, thank you.
Alderman Schmelz. When the community has feedback that crime has increased, did you do any review historically? It looks like most of your metrics were from twenty nineteen. For this study or was it not really in the scope of your work, just to see if that trend is legitimate?
Oh, we did look at trend in terms of of crime. Yes, we did.
So was it? Did that? See, I didn't read this portion. I didn't see it in the report. Did it look as though that is a legitimate concern from the community or is it more perception?
More perception.
Thank you.
Other questions from members of the council? Alderman Gellhard.
Mr. Brady, when you had an opportunity to interview officers, what was their general morale, their level morale when you interviewed them?
I think it was good. I think that and I wrote along with ten or eleven of them, I think. And so I saw a range of officers in terms of. People who you brought in as recruits, some relatively recently, some been around for a while. But also lateral officers, police officers who came from other agencies. And I think that part was really telling because. They had the opportunity to come from whatever agency they came from and to select another agency that they wanted to go to. And the reputation of Glendale is a department that people want to go to.
Eddy.
How does it work as far as we hear directly from the chief? His, you know, in time you get a report on some in your organization, like to have a chance to defend or talk about it.
Absolutely. And this is, this is, I believe, one of a few conversations. I don't think this will be our only conversation. If chief wants to speak now, if he wants to talk again at the next meeting after we weren't. We weren't privy of the presentation itself. However, we did receive the report prior to and spoke with Mr. Brady and his team. Prior to you receiving it as a final draft.
Eve, did you want to? Microphone's on on.
Microphone.
Working now. All right. I I think it'd be nice if everyone had a chance to really go through it. You've listened to. Matrix's proposal. And then if we have another chance for another meeting, if you had more directed questions, obviously there are some things that I would like to present. But in general, I think it was for most part a very favorable study. And there's a lot of the recommendations that. That I either agree with or that we're in the process of doing anyway. There are some things that I have some concerns about. But I think if everyone had a chance to look at it and then the council could come back with some more. Whatever you had your questions or concerns on, I think that'd be probably easier than trying to go through it all tonight. And then you go back and read a ninety page document and.
I I read it all, but I didn't feel I didn't feel qualified yet even from just reading it to come up with questions. I just want to make sure we have some more dialogue on it. It looks very useful, gave me a lot of definitions of things I hadn't thought about. And also it was good just to see, you know, like caseload analysis. I hadn't really thought of it that way, time available and what what they can do another time. So I think all that was useful. I just think I want to hear from chief later and more time to study this would be useful for me too.
Absolutely. And just to be aware, we're hoping to have this on the next agenda for certain, possibly the one after that. But it's gonna be a prime discussion as we're going into budget season. That if there are changes that need to be made that are budget related, this is an excellent time to have those conversations.
Isn't it good? Autobahn Vugovich. Well, I was just gonna ask, is there an intention then to also share this with the police commission? Since some of the recommendations here do involve the police commission.
I I would think that we will be doing that as far as the the budget and policies would like to hear from chief on on his policies. I don't venture into those. However, as far as it relates to what is necessary to be funded, new software, things like that, that's gonna need to to have some funding to go with it.
Right, that obviously is a council related.
But as far as a police commission, I would hope that we would share that with the police commission at an upcoming meeting. As they were looking to possibly update their policies anyway.
Once the council got this, then and everyone's fine. I could send the copy of it to all the police commission members. We have a meeting actually Wednesday night. So. I'll forward it to them before that.
Okay, thank you, chief. Alderman Vugovich. Yeah, Mike.
As a member of the police commission, I do have to say some of the stuff that the their recommendations, I know. Chief Chief Ferguson, I was called the chiefy. Chief Ferguson has addressed and said, I think we've had conversations about some of the stuff. So I think they he's well aware of like at least my suggestions and then the the police commission suggestion. So. Overall, I am like. As a a black woman, as a person that live in this this district, I am overall excited about our our. The way we do things and how our chief chief looks at. Some of the issues that are happening in the world. I'm satisfied or that we're either we've taken care of them, we're working on them, or it's just gonna take some time to do it. So. I just am kind of proud of our police department and being who I am. Yes, I call them and yell at them sometimes, but overall I'm, but that's just me. But I overall like appreciate our department.
Alderman Weezy.
Thank you. Again, having had the time to do a quick read of this, but I want to drive in deeper on the whole report. What struck me is that this is a wonderful roadmap for the police commission and the police department to work together. And refine just to some minor enhancements to what appears to be a very, very well run organization. One that I think the citizens of Glendale should be very pleased with.
Any other comments or questions from members of the council? Okay, well, Mr. Brady, Mr. Brady and Mr. Scruggs, thank you so much. We appreciate your work on the. Report and also taking time tonight to go through your presentation with us. So.
Thank you. Thank you very much for inviting us.
Thank you. Right. Next is going back to item five F discussion on speed reduction efforts in residential areas.
So over the the past couple of years, we have been talking about different options and ideas and how we are going to reduce. Speed in residential areas specifically, one of the test cases, which has been a huge success that I can't stop talking about is Bender Road. And what little paint can do to help reduce speeds as we're aware, not all. Paint is completely successful. We were very lucky in this situation. So wanted to make sure the council is aware of all different options that are available and what staff has for recommendations for the future. The staff recommendations are not for twenty twenty two specifically. This is definitely something that's going to have to come in over time and identify where we feel the highest need is with the biggest return on investment. For the time overall, with the help of the public works director and the city engineer. We came up with the background analysis and the definitions with and some nice pictures of speed bumps, speed humps. Speed tables, striping, and then the mini roundabouts. And throughout those explanations, also a potential cost impact. And that information did come from the city engineer as to what could be done with very minimal engineering, minimal costs. Or that could have a little bit more of an impact. Overall, what we are recommending for additional striping, Range Line Road from Good Hope to Mill Road. Overall, uh, what we are recommending for additional striping, uh, Range Line Road from Good Hope to Mill Road, uh, Green Tree Road from Green Bay Avenue to Range Line, Glendale Avenue from Port Washington Road to the, uh, city limits, Milwaukee River Parkway from Silver Spring to Bender. As we talk about some of these areas, uh, keep in mind, uh, that we may recommend that something can happen. It may take a little extra time as, uh, situations like Milwaukee River Parkway, uh, that is not a city road. Uh, we would need to receive permission from, uh, Milwaukee County Parks. Uh, same with recommended areas for speed humps, uh, which would be, include Mill Road. Uh, Mill Road is, I drive this a lot and has significant speeds coming down it. We do receive complaints from residents on a regular basis, uh, with it being a, a school area. It really would be helpful if we could get, uh, cooperation from Milwaukee County to have some speed humps in that area. And then as indicated in the five-year, uh, capital improvement program, uh, the Green Tree Road and Range Line Road Mini Roundabout. Um, and then, uh, added in, uh, by, by staff was Milwaukee River Parkway and Bender Road. Uh, that one may be a little challenging, however, if it, uh, we're gonna, we're putting up the signage that was approved uh, with the last, uh, meeting that we had on that with the traffic study. Uh, we'll analyze that situation again and see if there's, uh, any improvements. And if not, we may look at this as an option in the future. So as I identified at the beginning, uh, these are, are over the course of years that we would be able to, uh, allocate funding for all of these items and we want to make sure that we've given thorough analysis, um, prior to, uh, making these recommendations. The one with, uh, the mini roundabout, we, I believe we included for a twenty twenty-three. However, um, higher up you'll, uh, as I mentioned, we're gonna do striping first. How does the striping work? If that, uh, solves a lot of the challenges, we may not go to that next level with the mini roundabout. So if there's any questions or concerns right now, this is for discussion. Um, more would come through at the time of budget, uh, specifically identified. Uh, we are looking at possibly doing the striping on Range Line Road this year yet. We do have some budgeted money for, for line striping, um, and, and Range Line Road, uh, would be a, a great place to start with that. However, the, the first quote, uh, Charlie got was eighteen thousand dollars for two parking lanes, two drivelanes and, um, some, uh, bicycle identifiers in the driveline, just to remind drivers, they share the road with bicycles. And that was a little, um, that seemed like a high number, so we're getting some more quotes, but that's.
Didn't spend that much on Bender, did we?
I, well, Bender was part of the overlay of, of the whole process, so I'm not, I don't believe it was twenty thousand.
That was twenty-six thousand, six in my mind.
Well, if that, then that seems more reasonable. I'm, I'm forgetful. We'll look that up as well. But we're also gonna get a couple extra quotes to be sure.
Comments, discussion on this? Alderman Doherty?
I applaud looking at these. I mean, Bender Road is a fantastic change from, for the striping. So I think we want to look at that, but I think we always want to have some public comments on all these items because it really does affect people a lot. And I, you know, the roundabouts have done a lot of things right. There's also times I get a lot of feedback from people that, you know, the challenges. So I think it'd be worthwhile to make sure we keep open public dialogue on this.
Absolutely.
Alderman Vukovich?
I, I have a district that has a, I think some of us, some of it really doesn't, you know, then it's not as bad in one district compared to the other. So I think you're just gonna have to look at what, um, which ones are more urgent. I just know, um, I just question, like, I was looking at the different things, like some of them you wanted speed bumps and then you put the tables on. And I know there's a cost for the tables, but if you add in the speed bump, do you, can you plow over the speed bump? Okay, cuz that's what I was trying to figure out. It looks like you can with the table, but you can't with the speed bump. But would you, would it be more cost-effective to do the table because between the entry of our plow and some other stuff?
And there, there's, uh, also with, uh, speed humps, we've got to en- ensure there's proper signage so people know that the speed hump is coming. Uh, but yes, uh, you, the, you can plow with them. City of Milwaukee, uh, has speed humps, uh, throughout the community. Um, I know a couple of residential areas that have them, uh, Bayview and then, uh, I was on my way to the east side. I can't remember the name of the street now, off of North Avenue. And, uh, I was going east of, uh, North and Sixth. So there's a, that's where they've got the speed hump into a mini roundabout, um, very well done. So yes, they do plow over them and it's, yeah.
But I guess my question was, even though the speed humps look a little bit cheaper.
Mm-hmm.
But if you go through between the signage, all the other stuff that is needed, is it more cost-effective to get the table? I'm, I'm just, I really would answer, I want those questions answered.
Right.
Like, what's the difference in how much for signage compared to a hump versus a table where you don't have to do as much, but it also goes over a, I just would look for like, uh, cost effectiveness, I guess, this time.
Okay.
And I hate roundabouts, but I'm just letting you know.
I love the roundabouts because they keep traffic moving and, and you cannot go seventy miles an hour through a roundabout, so.
Do you think I hate them?
Well, not. Yeah, man. One time, right? Alderwoman Shaw?
This is to piggyback on Alderman Vukovich's, um, comments about the speed bumps, humps and tables. My biggest concern, and I know we've talked about these in the past, especially in residential areas. And it's obviously before some of the folks on the council have been on council. But the biggest concern is the damage to the plows as well as the damage to the street. Because when their plows are going through, trying to get the snow out of the way, they're doing their job to clear the, uh, streets as quickly as possible and as safely as possible for the residents who live in that neighborhood. So I'm just, my, I have, just have a big concern about the speed bumps, humps and tables just because of equipment maintenance and everything that goes along with it.
Alderman Schmelzling and then Alderman Weezy?
I, I applaud having this, uh, shared for our full council. I know we've had lots of conversations with staff about it, um, specifically to Range Line and, and a bit about Mill. Uh, I guess, I, I just, it seems like I'm hearing two things. Like prior, it was not recommended to have speed humps because of the impact to emergency vehicles, you know, the plows and the like. So, and also from what I understand, they act as a way for people to slam on their brakes and then speed up again, which can also create rear-end collisions and things. So I, I guess I'm just trying to understand what roads really cater to them. Because what I've, what I've read myself is they work well to prevent cut-through on very residential areas. And when I look at Range Line, it's, it's a straight shot. It is a, I forgot what they call it. It's not an arterial, but it's a collector road, I believe. So I don't know when to apply and when not to apply. I think if that would be helpful to understand a little bit better. But even my residents would love to have them, but at the same time, I want to make sure we're not just creating a new problem by putting them there. So, but yeah, I love the striping. Um, one thing not listed, and just for everyone's reference and bringing it up, I have spoken to, uh, uh, our city administrator about it is if you make a road look narrower, people tend to not speed as much because Range Line looks like in a landing strip for an airplane. So, so it has very large setbacks. Uh, I know sometimes trees and other types of things to make it look more residential are options, and I don't see that listed here.
I know, we have not, uh, looked into that as thoroughly. Um, we've been focusing mostly on the striping, that, that's gonna be, uh, the first aspect of it. Uh, a- as you indicated, that's gonna narrow the road as well. Um, I want to see if Charlie corrects me. So I believe Range Line is an arterial, as is Rochelle, where I live. Um, that's what it's considered. Oh, it's a main? What? Right? Which is the strangest thing because it's like a dead-end street and, but it's as wide as Range Line is, but that, that's. Yes, I'm, but, but my neighborhood is, it's a loop. It's, it's a, it's a, it's, it's very, some of these roads are, are extremely wide, which is, uh, really nice for when you have kids playing in the street and they want to, you know, play soccer or something. But, uh, for traffic safety and, and slowing down traffic, uh, the wide roads, uh, do increase the speed. So, uh, trees, uh, may be a possibility, uh, in the future as we, we continue to look through this.
And, uh, the road isn't as wide as Bender on Range Line, just for everyone's reference. Um, but the setbacks are huge, so. So anyways, thank you for the analysis and I am encouraged to continue the conversations.
Alderman Weezy?
Thank you. Uh, first, uh, to the paint on the roads, I think that, uh, has worked exceedingly well on Bender Road. Uh, but I do question, uh, the use of no passing, uh, striping in, in, uh, residential areas, especially into a cul-de-sac. You know, Charlie remembers this one. They, when they repaved the roads in my district, uh, the contractor got a little carried away with paint, but no passing along an entire city street and into a cul-de-sac, so we can't pass in the cul-de-sac.
It slowed down the traffic, though?
Uh, no.
Okay.
No, and that's the other thing is, uh, and that's a concern because in the fourth district, particularly in the river edge subdivision, we have some exceedingly long blocks, uh, some of darn near three-quarters of a mile and two-lane roads. People travel down those at fairly high rates of speed. I've had conversations with the chief about, you know, where we've had several very, very close calls with a number of. Yeah. Right. Uh, that, uh, there have been very close calls with, uh, unfortunately, no hazardous accidents to date, but I'm very much concerned. And that's where I would like to see in residential areas, the consideration of, you know, how is it considered to put in a speed table? Because, you know, I'm in favor of speed tables. You see them in quite a few places, uh, and they really do not appear to affect, uh, you know, damage to snowplows, for example. That I, you know, the ones that I've seen, and I've talked to a couple DPW, DPW directors, particularly in the Mequon area. And they don't have any issues. So, but I'd like to, you know, when you get into residential areas that have long streets, is that a consideration for inclusion of a, a speed control situation?
Alderman Gellhard? You know, a couple of years ago, there was some talk of, I don't know what they were called, temporary speed bumps or movable speed bumps. And the, the beauty of something like that would be that we could set them up and train people on a certain road that there's a speed bump there and they would slow down. And then after they got used to that, we could move it somewhere else. In the winter, we could pull it up and get rid of it so the, the snowplows could come through. So I guess, I, and I don't know if the chief, you were involved in that, but I, I know that, that we were talking about that. I don't, whatever happened to that idea?
Some of it was that the, uh, temporary bumps were not wide enough and, uh, so people would go around them. That was one of the concerns. Another concern was, uh, putting holes in the street, taking it out. And then if you try to put it back into that hole, that you'd actually have to move it and then move signage that goes with it as well. Um, having them more of a, a permanent also makes it a permanent solution instead of a temporary one. Uh, it's definitely something we can continue to look at.
I, I think that would be of the concerns of the, of the, uh, council members in, in terms of what I've heard, uh, tonight. Alderman Vukovich?
Wasn't one of the concerns, the, the cost of it compared to putting it out? Because even though they were a little bit cheaper, I think I remember replacing them or putting them in. The cost was more than just putting a permanent, like, bump out there.
I don't recall the cost.
I had just, it was like sixty-five, I wanted them because it was like sixty-five hundred dollars per, per one because I wanted them on Glendale Avenue and in Lydell. And that's one of the things I remember. It's like sixty-five hundred dollars plus to re-fix the street. It wasn't worth it, like to fix the street or try to patch the holes up. Yeah.
And they're indicating a speed hump is approximately five thousand dollars on this.
Other comments or other questions from members of the council? All right. So you're gonna bring this back to us again with.
It'll probably be brought back through the budgeting process and we can make some more decisions.
Okay. All right. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the Commission Committee and Border Reports. And this time I'm gonna start with District Four and Alderman Weezy.
Uh, nothing to report this evening.
Alderman Schmelzling?
Nothing to report.
Alderman Shaw?
I'll first start with Music in the Glen is currently going to be held Wednesday, depending upon the weather and the, uh, the band that is playing is Viva, which is a jazz band. And I can't even get into my own phone. Hang on for my calendar because I've been away, so I, a little out of it. So there is a North Shore Library Finance Committee meeting this Thursday at nine AM via Zoom. And then the board will meet the following Thursday at nine AM in person, I believe it is. So, but and then hope to see everyone at Music in the Glen, providing the weather permits us.
Yeah, Alderman Vukovich? Alderman Doherty?
Nothing to report.
Alderman Gellhard, nothing to report tonight. All right. And this being the month of August, there is no ICC meeting and no MMSD. So I don't have any reports, except that tomorrow morning, the North Shore Fire Department is meeting at eight o'clock. The North Shore Fire Department made a decision at our last meeting that in light of the seven communities coming together for these meetings that are held during the workday, that we are going to continue having those meetings over Zoom, unless there is a reason that we would need to meet in person. So if there were some big issue that we needed to discuss that would necessitate us being in person to, to look at plans for a renovation or something like that. So most of our meetings are gonna continue to be on Zoom. And I know that, uh, Rachel did send out to everybody the North Shore Fire Department agenda. So if you're bored tomorrow morning at eight o'clock, you're welcome to join us in the North Shore Fire Department meeting, so. All right. Yes, Alderman Shaw?
As I was gone, um, on my calendar, it told me that we were supposed to have a national night out. I would like to know how that went, if it was held.
I think it went much better when it was in Glendale, but it was all right.
I would dit of that, but I just, I knew it was there. I was gonna be at it, but I couldn't be two plate, in two states at once. Sorry.
It's, it still went well. Everyone was represented there.
Thank you.
They, they did beat us. They had two helicopters. We only had one at our last one, so. And Brown Deer Village Park.
All right. Uh, so that concludes all of our regular business. Um, we now have a, a, say it's two closed session items. Uh, we will reconvene afterwards in open session and there may be potential action on one of those closed session items. But at this point, can I have a motion from a member of the council to move into closed session subject to the Wisconsin statutes indicated on the agenda?
Second.
Move Alderman Weezy, second about Alderman Shaw. All those in favor of convening in closed session, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are now in closed session. Okay, we're, we're now back recording. We're now back in open session and it looks like the folks in the waiting room have been let back in. Okay, we have, uh, met in closed session. We did discuss the two items that were listed for closed session. At this time, there is no action, um, uh, for members of the council. So, um, uh, there was listed obviously on the agenda that there might be toward a settlement agreement. Uh, that settlement agreement, uh, is not before us yet. It actually hasn't been finalized in its negotiation. So, um, there is not anything to act on then in open session. We've now concluded all of our business. So, uh, Rachel, do you have any announcements for us before I ask for a motion to adjourn? Okay. And I know Joanne will tell us all the Come to Music in the Glen in two days, so, all right. Uh, all those, or can I get a motion to adjourn, please? Move Alderman Weezy, second about Alderman Doherty. All those in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We stand adjourned.